Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our town hall meeting this afternoon. We're just waiting for everyone to load into the system. So we're just going to wait a couple of minutes as the numbers start to climb here. Thank you so much for being patient. Just give it one more minute as the numbers load in and then we'll go from there. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm sure that we'll have some more join us, but it's nice to see those numbers growing. Good afternoon, happy Monday. My name is Kristana Wachs Harper. I'm the Administrative Director for Pupil and Community Services. Welcome to our town hall meeting where today it's all about social and emotional learning. I'm going to have Mrs. Raimundo share quickly that we do have translation available. Mrs. Raimundo?
Buenas tardes a todos, gracias y bienvenidos. No más queremos compartir con ustedes que tenemos traducción hoy. Abajo buscan el círculo y van a ver el signo en dice interpretación. Gracias.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Raimundo. I'm going to start with our superintendent, Mr. Richard Martinez. If you would like to share a few words with our families there.
Sure, not a problem. You know, I haven't talked to Mrs. Raimundo. If I were to press interpretation, would I be receiving this in Spanish as well? I suppose I would. I'd have to try that. Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank you all for being here. And it's exciting time of the year because we're bringing kids back. Kids are coming back remotely. I understand that from they'll be at home and learning in a distance learning environment, just like last spring. Our hope is that that will be temporary and hopefully here as we enter the semester and halfway through the semester or maybe second semester, we'll be able to resume education like you've been used to your entire lives. But thank you for your patience. We're excited again that we're coming together as teachers and counselors, administrators, support staff, our parents in ensuring that our students advance. So please pose all the questions that you have because I'm sure there's a lot of questions about what things look like. But specifically today, we're really focused on the wellbeing of a child and the wellbeing of ourselves as parents too. So we want to make sure that the caregivers, the caretakers are in good shape. And Ms. Acevedo and Ms. Mario Shown, that's one thing we can count on them for is kind of giving us some tips, giving us some tools so that way we could practice at home with those, with our children and with our spouses and with our loved ones. We want to make sure that we, they see strength in us, our children, and they see that, you know, in spite of a pandemic, we'll get through this and we're going to do fine and we'll struggle a little bit. And it's okay to be honest, if you're struggling, that's a good thing because that's healthy and it's part of learning and it's also getting the tools or the powerful pieces and how to deal with this. So again, thank you, Ms. Acevedo, and thank you, Ms. Mario Shown, Dr. Mario Shown for taking care of us.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. I'd also like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent for Education Services, Ms. Lilia Fuentes. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being part of our meeting today, our town hall. This is an important part of what we do about our social emotional learning and about the whole child. Dr. Shown and Patty Acevedo will be sharing.
I think we just lost Mrs. Fuentes. Hopefully we'll get her to come back in. Well, as soon as I see her, we'll have her come back in. So as we're moving forward again today, we're going to have a presentation from Dr. Shown, who is our Director for Equity Professional Development, as well as Mrs. Patty Acevedo, who is our Director for School Mental Health. And they want to share with us some really important information just about wellness and particularly with the challenge of the pandemic and the challenge of distance learning. So that will be our focus for today. And then Wednesday, we will have a repeat Wednesday at 5:00 for those who aren't able to join us in the afternoon. I also want to share with you that next week, as we begin school, our focus is going to be on technology. Dr. Wagner, our Director for Education Technology, is going to have sessions throughout the day as well as our town hall sessions for parents to connect, for parents to ask questions, to try out those devices, to tell us what's working. And so that will be an ongoing part of our focus for the following two weeks so that we can make sure everyone is connected and you've gotten all your questions about everything technology. I'm going to switch back over to Mrs. Fuentes. We got you back. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. I've been having some issues today with my computer, but we got back. So again, we were just sharing about our whole child and making sure that all our students are, have the support services they need from academic to social emotional. Again, we met today with all our staffs and just wanted to reiterate our commitment to working with our students to ensure that their reading and literacy still continues to be in the forefront and that we are doing it in a different mode of delivery, but we will continue to make sure that we provide all the services for our students. So again, thank you for joining us, ask us our questions, and so we take those and we're working through all the questions parents have been asking us. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuentes. Mrs. Raimondo?
Parents, what a wonderful time as we move closer to the opening of school this year in our distant learning fashion. We're excited to take this opportunity. You're going to hear a number of tips being shared today as we venture on this journey together. One thing to remember is there are no specific rules. Working with your child is the key and taking the time to understand them and how they learn is the success. But first, one solid tip for you parents, take care of yourself. It's very important as a parent and a caregiver to manage your emotions and know that everything will not be perfect, but as you take the journey together with your child, you will have success. Be a good model for them. Do fun things with them. Do something kind for one and other. Be a good listener. But most of all, be available and present when they need you. That is the most important thing to know, that you are there for them at all times. We appreciate your time today and we are looking forward to our work together. And I will let Dr. Shown and Dr. Acevedo take it away. Thank you very much.
And I'm going to jump in very quickly before we start, just to remind parents to please put any questions that you have in the Q and A. And once we complete the presentations, we will then devote time to answering your questions. So thank you. Dr. Shown?
Hi, good afternoon. Can I share a screen now, Dr. Harper? Good afternoon, parents and community partners, families. My name is Catherine Shown and we are so honored and thank you for joining us today. I'm going to be sharing my screen. We're so excited to have this opportunity to share with you about social emotional learning from trauma informed to trauma transformed schools. And I'm excited and honored to be co-presenting with this Patty Acevedo, the Director of School Mental Health. She's going to be introducing herself in a minute. And I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation for, you know, being blessed as work in a district that capitalizes and prioritizes in the safety and wellbeing of our students and families as the kind of grounding of teaching and learning. So thank you and thank you, Dr. Harper and team for making this happen. Patty?
Thank you, Dr. Harper and team for making this happen. One of my favorite things to do is to work with parents. It's, I usually don't like speaking, but I really enjoy working with parents and I miss the energy of being in the same room with all of you. But I'm hoping we can share quite a bit of information and, you know, I think Ms. Raimondo said it all in all that she shared, just in a nutshell, of what you need to do for your children. So we're going to talk about what the school's going to look like in that area. So Catherine?
Yes, so thank you for that, Patty. We're going to want to start off by sharing this with you. It's called a padlet. Some of you may have seen your children using this. If you are able to, let me see if they're able to access the presentation. Do you have a way to do that? We didn't do that. Share it ahead of time. So let me talk a little bit about this. A padlet is like an online post-it notes, like this, which you have probably in your refrigerator or somewhere in kitchen and you put it. And so we have this activity that I don't believe we can access now, right? Because we didn't share the presentation ahead. And so we're going to go ahead and improvise right here. And it's about self-compassion in daily life or what our superintendent and our Ms. Fuentes mentioned earlier about self-care approach. Those are techie. All right. This is where the grace happens. So typically what we would do, and we would go ahead and share with you the screen in a minute, is to think about, and you can just share in the chat right now. We're going to go ahead and improvise because this is our world, right? We're students of learning first and foremost, and there will be mistakes along the way. If you could, please identify your first name on the chat and just to share one or two or three ways that you support your own self-care as parents.
Really quickly, a chat in the webinar is not available. Parents are usually...
It's not, okay. So we're going to have like a conversation, right? So let me walk everyone in our little chart right here that shows physical, mental, emotional, and relational and spiritual ways for which we take care of ourselves, right? So you can see all the illustration here about what we do to relieve that stress that we all get, the mental way of reducing our agitation, the way we soothe and comfort ourselves and connecting with others because that also energizes us, and spiritual ways that we connect within ourselves. So Patty, chime in at any time.
I really think it's important, and Ms. Raimondo mentioned it earlier, but you as parents, you need to maintain your emotional health. It's essential. It's very essential for you to take care of you because you cannot support someone else until you're able to support yourself first. It's kind of what they make you do on a plane. If they're, you know, you need to put the mask on first and then put the mask on your child. So the same concept goes with being home and taking care of all of your needs, all the needs that were mentioned earlier. So we can do these things in the moment. And if you notice, the pictures on here are very simple. They're not, they're not anything. We don't have to go to Disneyland for the day. We, you know, they're nothing very expensive. They don't have to be, you know, a seven-day, you know, vacation, just even a warm bath or praying, you know? Just taking a moment to pray or to do some deep breathing. And we'll talk a little bit about that later on in our presentation. The daily gratitude, if you can sit for five minutes with a cup of coffee or a cup of tea and write down three things you're grateful for that morning, that will do wonders and you will see a shift in your whole attitude for the rest of the day.
What I'd like to highlight with what Patty was talking about is the impact of self-care in terms of our physical, mental, emotional wellbeing. As you mentioned that when we ride in an airplane, the first thing that they ask you to do is to put on the mask. So good self-care improves our mood and our physical and mental state and it reduces anxiety. So it's also well-supported by medical, you know, research and science. So I'm just going to go ahead and select this that we were not able to do with you, which I can't access right now. Another thing I would like to highlight is that these are the types of activity that we are going to engage, not just our teachers as they return from, you know, to work this week in professional learning, to engage them in ways that they could kind of reflect and be in a state of calm, knowing that all of us have been impacted by this trauma and modeling the ways for which we take care of ourselves. This is also an activity that teachers will be doing in the classroom to engage with your children and our students, to make sure that we connect with them and to really get to know them and how to intervene early and be preventative and proactive. So another way that we would look at what we just discussed about self-compassion in daily life is that we appreciate this quote that says, "Self-care is an ethical imperative and the quality of our care is dependent upon our own wellbeing." And that pretty much sums it all. It's a lot easier to say than do and much more on this part where it says, "Self-care is giving the world the best of us instead of what's left of us." And we want to keep that in mind as we welcome our students back to school and same with you at home, noting that our children are going to want to have the best part of us as we also deal with this situation. Another way that we are going to engage today and sharing, hearing your experiences and, you know, also contributing some of our tips and thinking, not necessarily as experts, but just so that we have a context. This whole notion of the definition of equity. And if you look at this slide, it shows that equity is each and every student receiving what they need to succeed by enacting policies, practices, and programs. And the main goal for that is to eliminate educational barriers based on gender, race, or gender disabilities and other, you know, status. And the second is to provide educational opportunities and to assure that those who needed to be served most or underrepresented get that kind of support as Ms. Acevedo mentioned earlier. And then the last piece, it's really important because this is what we want for all our students, this is what you want for your children coming into school, is that equity strategies are planned systemic and focused on the core of teaching and learning. And that is achieved through our curriculum, instruction, and school environment and culture. But it's one way to define equity and then one way to actually make it happen. And this is probably more of a direct, write-on statement, but it's really, really critical for us to look at it. This organization, we are committed to equity. Equity is to deliver it continuous interrogation and dismantle the stressual oppression. And in a nutshell, what we're saying is that we are continuously committed to make sure that we know a path unturned and no pieces of support not available for every single child in our system, to make sure that their needs are met.
Okay. One of the things that we are really working on as a district is for all of us to have a common language, that when you're at home and your student comes and talks about social emotional learning or what, or say, trauma informed or PBIS, we want to make sure that we all know what that language is. So part of our outcomes for social emotional learning is to establish a common language around that, around social emotional learning as well as multi-tiered behavioral supports, which comes out of PBIS. We want to deepen our understanding of how trauma really does impact learning. And we know that when kids come back, some of what they've been doing of being home and not, and having their life disrupted is going to impact their response to coming back to school. We need to really deepen our understanding about why we need to have a trauma-informed school. We want to make a commitment, an actionable commitment, that everyone supports all students to feel safe physically, socially, emotionally, and academically, that everyone who's a member of the school community is committed to doing this. We want to, as Ms. Fuentes talked about, the whole child, we want to address students' needs in holistic ways. We want to be able to know who their relationships are with. We also want them to learn skills to self-regulate when they're mad, but also look at where they are developmentally. We want to look at their academic competence, that's always first and foremost as a school teacher, but also their physical and emotional wellbeing. We want to connect the students to the school community. We want them to have opportunities to deal with that as their student. We want parents to be connected to the school community as well. One of our jobs as, as the team here is to get each school staff to work together as a team and that everyone is sharing the responsibility for every student, not just one person, but everyone. And we also want to have a school culture that anticipates and adapts to the ever-changing needs of our students and our community. And as we felt this, March, everything changed and we need to start to anticipate different changes, but also be prepared. Catherine, did you want to add to that? You're on mute.
You covered it well. That would be like an automatic language, a common language. I think you covered it well, Ms. Acevedo. I think it bodes really well to the next slide, which is showing that, you know, this is what you were talking about. As parents and all of us pretty much, the three core, very basic needs of human beings is to be safe, to feel like they belong and they matter. And so as our students come back to school, it's really important that they feel safe and secure, that physiological needs, right? The basic needs that you were talking about, Ms. Acevedo, is taken care of. And, but once they're here, wanted to make sure that we prioritize on their Maslow needs before they can fully bloom and attend to the math, science, you know, social studies and all of the curricular subject matter, is when they come, they wanted to feel all of this one and the second part, that they are part of the school community, as you mentioned. So you just summed this, you know, image very well. And our role, as you said, is to take them from feeling like their basic needs are taken care of and they are cared for and valued and their academic achievement will naturally, you know, bloom, you know, as well.
So we're going to have to adjust to this one because I know we used the chat the last time too when we did this. And I'm not sure how to do this. So they can't chat at all, Krista, Dr. Wachs Harper?
They're putting in comments, actually in the Q and A, there's a Q and A link that we're using. So they are able to do that and give you some responses.
What I'm hoping is if some of the parents could just, when we say trauma and they hear the words trauma or trauma informed, what are some of the meanings of those words that they know as they understand it? If they could put some of those in the, in the Q and A?
The Q and A, yes, of course.
Okay, that would be helpful. So someone said that it's an event. And that's, yes, it is. Trauma is an event. Why don't we just go ahead and move to the next one? Catherine? So there are a lot of different descriptions of trauma and we use a lot of words. Schools, it's become very popular. We use trauma-informed, we use trauma-sensitive, trauma-responsive. And those all intertwine. They're all the same thing. So we can be trauma-informed, trauma-responsive, but we really want to get our schools to trauma-transformed or they have a complete understanding of trauma. But there are two different definitions for trauma. And the first one is experiences or situations that are emotionally painful. So those are the events that someone had mentioned. And that overwhelm people's ability to cope, leaving them powerless. Personally, that's, I like that definition for trauma because it could be just about anything. Now SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration for the, for the nation, describes trauma as the individual trauma results from an event, series of events, a set of circumstances that is experienced by an individual as physically or emotionally harmful or life-threatening and that has lasting adverse effects on the individual's functioning and mental, physical, social, emotional, or spiritual wellbeing. That is the most common definition of trauma. For most, most of the time, trauma results from disrupted relationships. Either their children are witness, witnessing domestic violence in the home or maybe dad leaves or there's, there's a lot of, it's usually surrounding primarily from relationships. What happens when, when kids feel trauma, when adults feel trauma, we really feel helpless. We really feel disconnected. There's a fear of not understanding what's going on. And then that also sets into a sense of self, of, you know, not feeling good enough. And then there are two different types of trauma, which is very direct. It's something happened to them. It's very identifiable. There was a situation. We look at when there are hurricanes or, I'm trying to think of other things, an earthquake, a very large earthquake. We know what it was. We know what the trauma was. And then there's more subtle, more chronic, compounded, maybe a parent or a grandparent is an alcoholic and there's a lot of times they come home drunk. So it's constant. There's not anything that you can quickly identify, but that does affect a child. And one of my favorite quotes is, you know, to really understand that children are like wet cement. Whatever falls on them is going to make an impression. And we need to keep that in mind, that, that they're, they're right there and they're waiting for us. And so when different situations happen, some that are completely out of our control like this pandemic, it does affect our kids and it does make an impression on them. Next slide. So different kinds of traumatic experiences could be community violence. Sometimes with some of the situations that have happened pretty recently and we've seen it, seen it on TV and social media, you know, with the police and African-American people that they, you know, there's been a lot of violence that, that children can watch on television or they actually experience it in their community. There's also a loss of a loved one, either through death or incarceration or maybe a parent is deported or through foster care. Kids are removed from the home and they're placed in a different situation. Natural disasters, car accidents, physical abuse, some of the gang violence they may witness, wildfires. I had that trauma last week. There was a wildfire that was right on the other side of my home. So thank goodness it was contained pretty quickly, but it does put you in that sense of what am I going to lose and what's going to happen? Grief can also become traumatic for children, especially if it's not shared or talked about. School violence, kids that are attending school where there are lots of fights every day and sometimes terrorism. Other things that are included, you know, the pandemic isn't on this list. This isn't, you know, a list that we haven't updated, but that could easily be on this as an example of traumatic experiences. Let's go to the next slide, Catherine?
I'm just going to mention that, and I think you mentioned that... Ms. Acevedo, I'm just gonna mention that, and I think you mentioned the pandemic, but sometimes the grief is not necessarily a loss of, you know, a person, but a loss is something that's near and dear to you. For example, of, you know, your freedom and social, you know, interactions with friends, and that's really, you know, very hard for kids as well.
So how does it affect academics? Because this is where we see it in the classroom. And what some of the research that has come out of UCLA, it really shows that it does take a toll. It will affect a child's reading ability. It will affect their IQ, their ability to understand complex information. We see kids who've had severe traumatic experiences being expelled more often, or being suspended. Kids who have traumatic experience tend to miss school, not show up, be absent, and most likely not graduate from high school. So these are things that actually affect, when they start to do the research and find out where these kids are, that it does affect them academically and at school. So a couple of years ago in the 90s, Kaiser came out with a study that they did on adverse childhood experiences. And I like this little slot, this little video that will kind of explain it all. So let's go ahead and watch this first, and then we'll talk about it afterward. Sound is off. There's no sound, Catherine.
No sound is coming through now.
We tested this out earlier as well, and it worked.
It's just one of those things that happens in life. Yeah, maybe a restart might do it.
Okay. Let's try it again. Make sure. Is it working? No? Okay.
Let's go to the next slide, Catherine, and we'll just talk about.
Sure.
So the study was shared, was done in, from 95 to 97, and they studied about 17,000 people in San Diego. So it is, and it was coming out of Kaiser, and they were looking at basically weight. Some women had gone through a weight program, had lost a lot of weight, and they tended to put the weight back on fairly quickly. So this study was more about to find out what was happening. So what took place is this study, and they started to find out that all of these women and men and across the board, 17,000 of them, have these adverse childhood experiences. And it was groundbreaking, because they were able to see that because of the experiences that these people had in their childhood led to adult onset of chronic health diseases, of depression, of other mental illnesses, as well as violence and being a victim of violence, and social and financial problems. All of that came out of their adverse childhood experiences. Now, the ACE study has been studied quite a bit. There's probably about 70 research papers since that time. And what they found is that, it's a very simple study. It's very, there are 10 questions, and they ask you if you had had any of these things happen to you under the age of 18, and that's how people responded to it. So what they were measuring, what the researchers were measuring, were physical, sexual, and verbal abuse. A family member, could be a mom, grandma, a family member who was diagnosed, or who was depressed or diagnosed with a mental illness, or addicted to alcohol, or any, or another substance, or was in prison. There was also a question about witnessing your mother being abused, and a question on losing a parent to separation, or divorce, or another reason. So this created a score. So if you only, if you had three, if you had a score of three or more on this simple test, that means that you were, was more predictive of an increased risk of health challenges that would show up in your adulthood. If you had higher than four, four plus, you know, say to eight, there was, it even reduced the number of years that you would live, that it would cut down even up to 20 years off of your life. So there've been, they've done, like I said earlier, lots of research on this study, and they've, you know, changed it and have expanded it to include other things as well. But it's been fairly predictive. Now, what does that mean for us, for kids that are right now in education? We know that those experiences also create problems in the classroom. These are the kids that might be having some social problems. They might be having emotional, they don't know how to regulate their emotions, so they're having a difficult time in the classroom. It may slow them down cognitively. They're having a hard time understanding what the teacher is teaching. They have to be taught differently. So these experiences, this trauma is really, we also see the kids that are having more health challenges in the, at school. So those are the things that affect them in the classroom right now, currently. It will also affect them later in life. So we're hoping to kind of curtail that, and with having our teachers know about the adverse childhood experiences and be aware of that, as well as how to work with kids who may have trauma in their life right now. Go to the next slide.
Ms. Acevedo, I think I, we're gonna go back really quick, because I was able to work on the sound, but I wanted to add in what you're just saying in terms of impact, and how it may manifest academically. You know, it may look like when a child is having difficulty with their reading or other areas. It may appear like those learning differences will manifest as learning disability, and that's typically, you know, what happens, but it truly is not, as you said, if we can attend to those other factors to support them. So I got, let's try this again. I think I got the sound figured out. Yes?
What does your parents' divorce have to do with your risk for heart disease? If your mother had a drinking problem when you were growing up, are you more likely to suffer from depression as an adult? Here's what you should know about ACEs. ACEs stand for Adverse Childhood Experiences, Extremely Stressful Events That Can Happen To a Child Growing Up. Some experiences are so stressful that they can alter brain development, as well as the immune system, increasing the risk of lifelong health and social problems in adulthood. The term comes from the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, landmark research that shed new light on the root cause of everything from stroke and liver disease to substance abuse and mental illness. In the late 1990s, an epidemiologist from the Centers for Disease Control and a preventive medicine doctor at Kaiser Permanente set out to understand the association between childhood experience and lifelong health. They asked over 17,000 people in the Kaiser Health Plan in San Diego about their health history, as well as difficult questions about their experiences growing up. Anda and Felitti tallied up 10 different kinds of adversity in this largely middle-class and college-educated population. They were stunned to see how common ACEs were. 21% of all respondents were sexually abused as children. 19% grew up with someone who suffered mental illness. 28% had been physically abused. And two out of three respondents had experienced at least one ACE. The researchers next looked at how someone's ACE score, or the number of adversities they experienced, related to a wide array of serious health and social problems. They saw that the more ACEs someone had, the greater their risk for poor outcomes compared with someone with no ACEs. Someone with an ACE score of four had twice the risk of heart disease and cancer. Someone with an ACE score of five had an eight times greater chance of being an alcoholic. And those with an ACE score of six or more, on average, died 20 years earlier. With every major problem they looked at in the ACE study, the risk went up for each additional adverse experience in childhood. As Dr. Robert Anda says, "What's predictable is preventable." It's important to remember that ACEs are not destiny. ACEs are a tool for understanding the health of a population as a whole. For individuals, an ACE score can be a tool for understanding their own risk for health and social problems, and empower them to make changes for themselves and their children. ACEs tend to get passed down from generation to generation, and are common across all income levels, races, and cultures. But increasingly, people of all different professions and backgrounds are coming together to discuss how ACEs affect their communities. They're finding new ways to treat and prevent ACEs. Many doctors are starting to screen their patients for ACEs as part of their medical history. More schools are becoming trauma-informed, considering the source of problem behavior when disciplining their students, instead of immediately suspending or expelling them. To learn more about interrupting the cycle of adversity and improving health and well-being for the next generation, please visit kpjrfilms.co.
I'm glad that came up. It explained it so much better.
Yes, and I think that's powerful, that line about what is predictable is preventable, and that's the side that we are taking. And I know that Ms. Acevedo shared several definitions of trauma-informed school, but how does PUSD define trauma-informed schools? So we gravitated towards this, that trauma-informed schools acknowledge the prevalence of traumatic occurrence in our students' lives. And because of that, we create intentionally a flexible framework that provides universal supports, in that we are sensitive to those unique needs and is mindful of avoiding re-traumatization by creating those environments, the interactions, the meaningful relationships. So when students come back from, to school this year, we are all ready, work together in coordinated efforts, our counselors, our school staff, our teachers, our administration, coming all together to make sure that we support at the universe, at a universal level.
So when we look at the trauma-informed approach, we know we need to work on this now, as the students are coming back. One of the most important concern is related to safety. We want to make sure that our students are safe, our teachers are safe, everyone is safe when they return to school. We also know that during this pandemic, it's brought grief and loss, and possibly even trauma, which may include more risk for violence and abuse in the home. Many families are experiencing adversities related to their isolation, being isolated, not being around other family members. Also, you know, unmet basic needs, economic hardship is taking place during this pandemic. And we, it's essential for us to really work towards a trauma-informed approach. We need it, so that our students can learn, and our teachers can teach, and we can all provide some structure for the students as well. And we really want parents to know that, as a school community, we're really strengthening your child's well-being. We really want their well-being to come first, and for you to know that that's first and foremost, as what we do as a school district.
And I think we mentioned this earlier, in terms of using a multi-tiered systems of support framework and return to school. We already know what we're expecting. What we want to make sure is that there's an instruction for all. Like everybody, when they come back to school, will have virtual instruction that addresses not just students' academic needs, but their social-emotional learning needs. And that includes relationship building in small groups, homerooms, advisory, you know, teacher connections, and so forth. And the key is preventative, right? Having instruction that's developmentally appropriate at each level, whether they're kindergarten or high school, there's something for everyone, and that we're continually, culturally responsive, and focused on equity and community. In terms of assessment, I know Ms. Fuentes made this during one of our presentations at services, that we are going to continuously, continually assess academic and social-emotional learning needs of our students. That's what our teachers will be doing on Wednesdays, to see if, you know, where the gaps are, and where can we support our students. The data on engagement, how engaged they've been, their logging on, and those academic indicators and scores, and involving them, the voices of our students and educators as experts, listening to our students as well.
I really like this system here of really looking at the trauma-informed principles for both school and community success, because it puts the students right in the middle, and it makes them the core. And it feels like everything that we do around them is kind of like a big hug, okay? So we have our staff surrounding our students, as well as their parents and caregivers, and then our leadership team. And right after that, these are all the things that we want to touch on at the school side. We need our teachers and our administrators and our parents to understand trauma and stress, and how it affects. We need cultural humility and equity to understand each other. We need safety and predictability. All kids need that right now. So do the adults. I think compassion and dependability is gonna be very important as we return, understanding understanding where kids are coming from, understanding where teachers are coming from, but knowing that each day they're going to come back. We need to empower our parents. We need to empower our students. We need to collaborate. And we need to have nature voices are heard. The other piece is really looking at resilience. I know our superintendent spoke about resilience this morning as his kickoff for the new school year. And that's what we want for all, not just our administrators, but everyone, our teachers, our parents, our students. And resilience will come with the socio-emotional learning.
And it's like looking at what Ms. Acevedo just shared with a different lens, right? Earlier, you're looking at like a virtual hug. Well, in PUSD, we're looking at trauma-informed practices by making sure that we connect the dots. And that means our adult learners and supporting our students, that we are again providing that culture-responsive education, engaged teaching, restorative practices for healing and when we cause harm to others. And what the socio-emotional learning looks like for students and adults, equity work and that coordinated care so that we don't create gaps in services, promoting safety is first and foremost. And the implementation of positive behavior intervention supports, what we call PBIS in 33 of our schools. And one of the most important pieces is the co-creation of partnerships. That's with you, our community, our staff, because nothing can be achieved by ourselves.
Well, we want our schools, all of our schools, to become trauma-responsive. And here are the focus areas. And one of the things that we know, and it's foundational, we know that learning is best accomplished in a very caring teacher-student relationship. The stronger the relationship, the more the child wants to learn. If you think about a teacher you had, the one that made the most impression on you, it was usually a teacher who took time and asked you questions and got to know you as a person. And that's one of the things of a trauma-responsive school, of having teachers build those relationships. And this can help to prevent a lot of the trauma, the traumatic stress that comes from all of this. At the bottom of the building blocks is mindfulness of all. And that needs to be practiced by adults and by students throughout the day. And we can call it different things, and we do. We call them brain breaks. It could just be a moment of deep breathing. There are just lots of different ways, but we need to teach. And as adults, we need to learn that as well, to take that time to calm down, to relax. The three other blocks that are just above that mindfulness, physical safety, psychological safety, emotional safety, that's a must. That's a must for our students. That's a must for the adults in the school. And that's how we can build that supportive learning environment, is if kids and adults walk in and know that they're safe in those three areas. And again, strong relationships. And that's not just between teacher and student. It's also between administrators and teachers. But more important than that is between relationships between parents and teachers. Students need to see that, that their parents are building relationships with the teachers in the school. And then right at the top of that is our socio-emotional learning. And PBIS is integrated into the core curriculum and the instruction throughout the day. It's not just a separate, "Okay, now it's time to do socio-emotional learning." No, it's something we do as part of math. It's something we do as part of reading. It's integrated throughout the school day. Kathryn?
So at this time, we're going to go ahead and show this really quick video. And Ms. Acevedo will give you a quick background, and I'm going to go ahead and play it.
So one of the things this is going to show us, this is kind of scary looking at first, but when you see this video, it shows you what it looks like when a child's brain and body are constantly activated by stress. Okay, and how they're responding to their environment. Okay, Kathryn?
The reality is that we all need a certain amount of stress, a certain amount of anxiety to perform well. If we don't care about that exam that we're going to have tomorrow, we'll probably fail. If we're going to cross the street and a truck is coming at us, we have release of adrenaline. We have release of a hormone that we call cortisol. We want to jump out of there, and adrenaline and cortisol are going to help us do that. So there's that good amount of stress. But if all day long you're feeling like a truck is coming at you, day after day after day, that's going to take a toll on the body. And the amygdala obviously here has greater activation in the PBIS. We were able to image children that had experienced trauma and compare those brain images with children that didn't have an experience of trauma, didn't have symptoms.
Right, an exaggerated fear response.
An exaggerated fear response. With decreased activation in areas that we need to control that emotion in the frontal areas.
Exposure to early adversity and trauma literally affects the structure and function of children's developing brains. So the kid next to them hits them or the teacher reprimands them in a way that they're uncomfortable with, right? Literally what they're feeling, that activation is like there was a truck coming at them. You can give something that will mask symptoms, right? For example, if someone has a cough, right? You can give them a really strong cough serum that will suppress their cough. But if it's because they have tuberculosis or lung cancer, then what you're doing is merely masking the symptoms while the disease process continues to fester. We know what's happening in children's brains and bodies with the experience of toxic stress. So the question now is, what do we do about it?
So we need to counter this and ensure that children's brains and bodies are functioning in ways that they can learn. And they need to trust that their schools and their classrooms are safe places. And they won't feel like a truck is coming at them all the time. They won't be that hypervigilant and feel like everything is a threat. So one of the things that we know that works is mindfulness or brain breaks in the classroom to help children focus. If we could just take a moment and take a moment for yourself. And I think, and we did this this morning with the administrators, but since March, things have been on hyperspeed. Our lives have been so disrupted and so many different things have been going on. There's been so many worries to have. And if you can just take a moment, and if you'd like to, you can close your eyes. But take a moment and think about how much you've really accomplished and how you've made it through all that time to here with your kids at home every day, having to make sure they get on for distance learning, and how difficult it was in the beginning, because it was difficult. But you made it through. And I think you need to really breathe in that time that you actually got your children from March 13th through today, which is August 3rd. That's quite an accomplishment. And if you can just take a moment and give yourself some grace about those times and maybe things you didn't do right or you feel bad about, I'm going to ask you to take a really deep breath in of gratitude and grace for yourself. And then I'm going to ask you to release that breath and let it go. And let all those things that you feel like you didn't do right, you could have done better, you're going to just let it go because you did it. And you're going to forgive yourself. And you're going to move forward from today. So if we could take that moment, just take a big, deep breath in and all those things you've done, and then release it and let go of those things you wish you had done better. And really give yourself the grace of making it through to today, August 3rd. So in the classroom, we really want to have mindfulness. Some people don't like that. They like brain breaks better, that word, whatever you want to call it. But it needs to be something that's done daily. It needs to be a practice that's done daily, even if it's just for a few minutes. And it could be done several times a day. Just so children and adults, I've learned from these brain breaks myself, of being able to let go of some of that anxiety, of some of that stress, and help to calm down for a moment so you can clear your brain. Because one thing we know is that a stressed brain can't learn. It really can't. And you know that yourself. If you're very stressed about something, there's a situation going on, you can't think about anything else. The same goes for our kids. So we really need to have a daily practice. We need to make sure our teachers are planning for these times, these brain breaks, just so, especially because they're on digital, you know, they're on technology, to give them a break from that and help them to refocus. So it could be, there's been an event. We could do it for unpredictable times. But I think if we can practice it daily, then kids get used to doing that. It becomes part of their day, something that they do every day. And this is the ways that we want them to do it in the classroom. So you're going to hear your children talk about either a brain break or mindfulness. And maybe you can have them teach you how to do some of the skills that they're learning. And maybe they can tell you, "This is what I do when I'm angry. This is what I do when I'm scared. This is what I'm doing when I don't understand what's going on in the classroom." And have them share those things with you. But in the classroom, these are things that we're expecting the teachers to be able to utilize with our students.
Patty, I know many of our parents probably are familiar with the mindfulness and breathing because we've offered several of those classes through sky breathing, right? And many of our staff members as well attended, thanks to Dr. Herman. But also, some of our schools have done the YES program. But even if they didn't, this is one thing that we're saying that our adult learners, all of us in our system, is going to have to do it because it's a gift of mindfulness for our students, right? And what we want is to habituate it and use it for self-regulation for all. So thank you for that reminder. And I think that kind of answers this essential question that we want to keep in mind as an organization. It's like, how are we creating equitable, trauma-informed, trauma-responsive systems that are socially and racially just within a multi-tiered systems of support? We want to make sure that our students know that there are supports available to all. And if they needed some more, that targeted group or some students will have additional supports and a few may need more intensive supports as well.
So part of the practices that we have is just really kind of kindness. I mean, we want to always empower children, want them to feel like they have a voice and they're being heard. We want to often give them unconditional positive regard, even when they're their grumpiest. We need to be able to, you know, give them positive regard about them and not be a put-down. And at the same time, we have to have high expectations. We need to maintain those. Trauma-informed does not mean being warm and fuzzy and we get rid of everything and, you know, you get a prize for breathing in and out. No, we need those high expectations that they're going to do well. But we also want to come from a lens that's, you know, looking at that unconditional positive regard. We want our teachers and our staff to really sometimes look at behavior a different way. Because sometimes behavior is the only way kids know how to communicate. They know how to tell us what's going on. They may not have the words for it. Sometimes with trauma, children act much younger than they really are developmentally. And we need to really check ourselves on that. By ourselves, I mean the adults. And we need to teach kids and each other how to have healthy relationships. We need to be relationship coaches because nobody teaches us that. We don't learn how to develop healthy relationships. And we need our teachers to be able to share what that looks like for our students. We need to, you know, make sure that they're participating in meaningful ways. We need to integrate their knowledge, their experiences, their cultural inventory into their lessons, into the classroom climate. And we need to help them develop self-awareness of maybe why they're acting the way they do sometimes and get them to understand that.
So what you're really describing, Patty, is what we call the socio-emotional learning or this competency that you can see right here. Much like with academics, we have standards that we follow. We do not necessarily need a program, but we have and will continue to be guided by the CELL or Castle Collaborative for Academic Socioemotional Learning. And it's a process through which children and adults understand and manage their emotions. And when they're able to do that, they're able to set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish, maintain positive relationships, and that's when they make a difference. So these are the goals that we're going to have for our students and so embedding it also with adult professional learning. This is just kind of like an example of what Ms. Acevedo said earlier about the CELL practices and the positive behavior intervention supports are not taught in isolation. So an example would be an advisory where there will be daily news, greeting, opportunities for students to share, and different activities that would allow their voice and decision-making skills to come into play. I think the next couple of slides really are just examples of how we are going to continue to promote a trauma-informed approaches through socio-emotional learning and how it manifests in classrooms from K or pre-K to 712. So there are ways for which we will involve our students from responsible decision-making, building their social awareness, self-management, self-awareness, and social awareness. And so there are activities in CELL literature and also books where they can be exposed to those standards and we can see them apply it and support them along the way. Our PBIS coaches have worked diligently this summer to come up with CELL lessons that are ready first day, first week, first month, and ongoing when we return to school virtually. And you can see all of those components right here on the left and the way that we are planning as a system, as we said earlier, proactively, preventatively, and systemically in response to our students coming in. Once again, these are just some examples of those practices inside a classroom. And individually, parents, some or many of you may have attended our sessions in PBIS before. There are very specific practices that we have actually that you may also use at home and they're proven to be effective, like three-step praise, the five-to-one, five positives when redirecting them and using restorative languages, et cetera, that we can align so that what students are seeing in school that they are also experiencing at home with you and support. And I think we really covered this earlier, but here are the key components that we wanted to make sure that we continue to guide us in trauma-informed care, that students and adults equally feel safe, that there's opportunity for choice, collaboration, and that trust is important in order for our partnership to feel, you know, successful at different levels. I think Patty covered, you covered some of this earlier in your mindfulness. I think Patty covered, you covered some of this earlier in your mindfulness. Again, just showing you a myriad of ways that it doesn't matter where the setting is at. We can be virtual, and we can do this Go Noodle and allow for movement, and ways that our teachers have really researched and worked together to make sure that, as our president of board mentioned earlier, our virtual experience is worthy of our students.
And all of this has to provide with strong relationships. And it's strong relationships for all. We talked about this earlier as well. Kids need to feel respected by adults in the building. Adults need to feel respected by other adults in the building. We need, kids need to see teachers as supportive and caring. They need to see teachers that try to understand their problems outside of school. Kids need to believe that the discipline is fair, and that instruction is connected to their identities and their interests, that it makes sense to them. They also need to believe that their teachers recognize value and reward their efforts. And I think that, that's just kind of, you know, the overarching goal is really to build those positive relationships, so that kids feel connected to the school and they feel like they belong. So I look at this, this is from a TED Talk. If you get a chance to go on, Rita Pearson, and listen to her TED Talk as to how positive that every child needs a champion. She really champions human connection. She talks about how teachers need to feel joy in their job, and they, they need to understand their job's tough, but that they can do it. That they're, they're born to make a difference as an educator. And the more we can do this, every time we can become a champion for our kids, that a child will know that someone will not give up on them, that kids will learn from them. And she loves this idea of having the teacher say to each child in their class individually, "You were chosen to be in my class. I chose you to be in my class", and have that feeling of being chosen. Even though they weren't, they were assigned, but she wants each child to know from that very first day that you were chosen. And she wants her students to say to her, "You made me feel like I was a somebody." And like I said, if you get a chance, go onto TED Talks and just watch her TED Talk. It's so uplifting. It's a great way to start the school year.
And I think building into that, it's, it's really going to be challenging to be a champion for our students, for our children, unless we're able to take care of ourselves. And we really love this one, and we heard it from our superintendent this morning as well. You can't pour from an empty cup. And so we want to circle back with that and closing with Ms. Acevedo. I want to thank you for your engagement today, and welcome questions in the end. And thank you for joining us. And again, this is a not one-time event. We're here to support you and your child throughout the entire school year.
Thank you so much. I didn't know, Ms. Acevedo, if you had any closing comments as well, or?
Nope.
We're good. So thank you so much, both of you. And I want to share, I've watched that Rita Pearson TED Talk many times, and she's actually now the late Rita Pearson, but it's really powerful and the wonderful legacy that she left for us as educators and also for us as parents. Some of the questions that came up that I know are specific to what you shared this afternoon. The first, first and foremost, the Padlet. Parents are asking if that chart can be posted somewhere so that they can have an opportunity to review it, if it's possible for it to be posted on the website. Do you know if it's accessible to us?
Yes, we can do that. So I, I can actually click right now to just show them that it's very interactive. So Ms. Acevedo and I filled up our, you know, and we'll, we'll attach a live link to that when we share the PowerPoint. Okay?
Is that something you're bringing up now, or that's something that we can just expect to have come up?
We will have it shared. I'll ask our tech to help upload it wherever it's needed.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you so much. And then the other question is that, is the Padlet a separate app that parents can go into, or is it just a, a set chart that was posted that was shared today?
Actually, if you go to padlet.com, it's, it's free, accessible via web as well. And, you know, I think you have a limit, a certain limit, and then you have at least six, and then you can wipe it out and start all over. But you can easily do this with, you know, your child at home as well. But I know that teachers do this a lot, and as a matter of fact, in one of our trainings in March, that we actually put together what we call like a Peacock Moment Wall, where each child or each teacher puts something positive about each other, and they have access to that. They can look at it, and it feels good.
Oh, very good. Thank you so much. I had a question from a parent in terms of how to help a child who just cries a lot, is just very challenged with the idea of coming back to school, is concerned because things are so different this year, some strategies for parents in helping students get connected.
Well, I think, because I think the tears can be fear, it can be anxiety. I think it's important to talk to the child, maybe when they're not crying, and maybe they can draw a picture of, because usually it's about fear. I, I know I have a little niece that, you know, is crying because she wants to go to school, and she doesn't understand why she has to stay home. So it's the opposite problem, you know? And it's more about talking to her when there, that it's not pressing right now. We're not even talking about school. They could be watching a movie or coloring. And I just had her draw pictures, and what came out of it, and she's a kinder. What came out of it is that, you know, she misses her friends, but most of all, she misses her teachers. And we need to understand that, that this is kind of grief for kids. The other piece could also be fear, that she's afraid something might happen. Remember, kids are, are really intelligent, and they're really in tune with what's going on. So if they're paying attention to what's on the television and stuff, they may think something will happen if they go to school. Something might happen to mom or dad if I go to school. And I don't know the situation, but I'd get her to start talking about it now, because, you know, we're doing virtual learning right now. So start to prepare her. Maybe her teacher can check in on her a couple of times as we're doing it virtually. Maybe have her do something special for the teacher that's just for her alone. I think, you know, it's, it's just really breaking it down and not asking her questions while she's crying, because she's in that part of her brain that, like we said, a stressed brain can't learn, okay? So waiting until she's in a place that she's not stressed, and to start the conversation. And it's going to be ongoing. It's not going to be a one-time conversation. She may come up with something different, you know, next week as well.
Yeah. Good to know. Thank you for that. Then I had another parent of a kinder and some concerns with the online learning, and some of the ways that maybe you've shared with teachers about how to keep our kids engaged in the distance learning format. What are some of the ways that they can adjust some of the learning strategies to help those younger kids especially to just stay connected?
Do you want to take this one, Catherine?
Yes. Actually, some of the examples that I've shared earlier, let me just pull something really quick, if I may, share a screen. I thought this would be really, really helpful for our parents to see. This is, let me share this. This is called a Safe Space, and it's actually have been modified different times, the elementary level to middle and high, depending on what their interests are. And it's virtual Safe Space. So you can click on any part of this, and everything here that you see, and I'm going to show a sample in a minute, are ways to kind of soothe and calm our students. And teachers, actually, our PBIS coaches and counselors, they all have access to this. So if I click, oh, I couldn't do that. You can hear the waves on that, right? And that's a three-hour wave. You don't have, sometimes they don't need much time like that, but they could. And, and there's different, this one is about, I know I've, I've seen this in, in clothing, but it's very, it's not accessible right now, but it will be. You know, just ways to connect with students at different levels. There is a live book there, there's, I don't know, this one. You know, each one of them are usable, right? It's very interactive. And to just show that it doesn't matter what level our students are in, our teachers, our staff, we're, we're ready to get to those engagement strategies.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. And I think there are some questions regarding just whether the schedules are going to be posted and, and for the daily schedules. Those are posted online, but what I want to share with parents as well is, many of you have had experiences already from last week and going into this week, where you're getting information now specifically from your child's school. And so please, continue to attend to those. If you're not receiving notifications for any reason, go ahead and email your child's principal, your school principal, and it's always, everyone's email is the same. It's firstname.lastname@pusd.org. Just to reach out and let them know. Also, our schools and office numbers are posted on the website. Our school offices are now open. And so it's really good to make a phone call. We have to have the social distancing protocols, and oftentimes, a lot of what is requested or a lot of the questions can be answered over the telephone, and that's safer for you. It also keeps you from having to line up, particularly now when the weather is less than comfortable, to have to wait. If you contact the office and, and share your concern, they'll let you know whether it's something that they can address with you over the phone, or if it's best to make an appointment and, and come in. So please, we're at that point now where you can reach out and connect with the schools directly. The other question had to do with, again, we have a, a child who is just struggling to attend, and whether it's online or in person, we've all had the experience of the child who just doesn't want to connect with school. And so if you have any strategies, whether it's online or in person, for a child who is just struggling with the idea of going back to school.
Right. Just really quick, I wanted to add to what Patty said earlier. I think especially if they're not new to PUSD, like they've attended previously in grade, other grade levels, I think this is where we can actually leverage what we call the relationships, right? Trying to find out who was that one adult at the school that this child is really connected with. Sometimes it's not necessarily the teacher. Sometimes, you know, I've had kids that they, they've had great relationship with the custodians, the campus security. Let's find out who this child is connected with and, and help reach out to the child, the counselor, or our school mental health staff. That would be really, really important, so that they feel that connection and that level of safety to connect with, and, and share the root cause of their fear.
Thank you for that, Dr. Shown. And then this one is, I think, a little bit different. It's requesting information about online tutoring support. And I just want to share that the interventions, particularly on those Wednesday schedules, those will be a number of different programs. For example, we have the National College Resource Foundation at secondary, along with Bright Prospect. We have Justice for Youth at the younger grades as well. And our TLC program, we're working to bring as much support as we can online. And as our presenter shared this afternoon, we will also make sure that we have the, not just the academic tutoring, which is something that we've come to see as familiar in, in the schools, but also the socio-emotional support, reaching out, having those counselor appointments, having referrals for students with additional concerns. And you, as a parent, may see something at home that we are not seeing in the virtual classroom. So you may always reach out to your school principal, to your child's teacher, to your counselor, and share with them concerns so that we can follow up with referrals as needed. But we do want to know, because again, you will have sometimes more information than we have at the school site in terms of support for your child. A phone number for homework help is still going to be that initial contact once school is started with your child's teacher, but additional resource information is going to be available directly from your school site. So your school's number, which again is attached to each of our schools as they're listed on our website when you look at the main page, and you see schools, and you scroll down, it will give you that school information along with address and contact information. A couple of questions about scheduling. The schedules, again, are posted online, but your schools are going to reach out specifically, as well as which group your child is enrolled in, and the schedule based on that group for your child, the live interactions times that are scheduled as well. So again, you're going to be getting, we're seeing some of the newsletters and, and other items going out from the school sites. Schools are also going to contact you regarding materials distribution, whether it's a Chromebook for a new student or other textbooks as well. Those items are being put together during this week. We started with those during the last couple of weeks, but especially now. And so schools will be reaching out to parents to make sure that we share those distribution schedules. If you have not completed your online enrollment, please do so. It gives us the most current information regarding you, regarding your student as we place students into the cohort groups for instruction. Again, please make sure that you've completed your online registration. I do not see additional questions at this time. So I want to, again, thank you, Dr. Shown, Ms. Acevedo, for what you've shared. I think we, we all tend to just feel a bit more comforted and, and, and safe in our understanding of what's needed, particularly at this time. And we're just thankful for the support within the system. There's a lot available in terms of resources, and we're going to continue to work to support our families. At this time, I, I think we're, oh, and I want to remind you, Wednesday from 5 to 7, we will repeat this segment. So if you have, if you know of other parents who are not able to attend during the day, again, Wednesday will be another opportunity to get this information regarding socio-emotional learning and support. And then next week, it's going to be all about technology and how to get those Chromebooks turned on all day throughout the town halls and throughout that first week of school. So again, thank you. I also want to thank our community schools and our People and Community Services staff. It takes a team to put these webinars together. I have people working the chat. I have Teresa, who's doing our Spanish language interpretation. I have Diana Marmalajo-Rimundo, Maria Garcia, Sony Ganchandani, Elizabeth Alfaro from People and Community Services. We have Melissa Ayala, Julie Cortez, Crystal Lopez, Davina Popas, Tatiana Gomez from our community schools. We have Dennis Rivera, Haley Charcon, in our Public Information Officer and Instructional and Ed Tech. It takes the entire team to put this on. So I just want to thank you again for all that you do to make this happen. I don't know if Mr. Martinez is still with us or not to share any closing. I don't want to close without checking with the boss. No, I don't see him.
No, he is not.
Okay, perfect. Mrs. Fuentes, did you want to share any closing words before we finish up this afternoon? I don't think she's on as well. All right, then, Mrs. Marmalajo-Rimundo, it's up to you to close us out. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, parents. You had the opportunity to hear some wonderful information. And ask yourself today, "Am I a champion for my child? What can I do?" Build strong connections with your children. Know and help them build pride in the character of who they are. Teach them to cope with life's ups and downs. Encourage them to be confident and take healthy risks. Talk about things with them, and always maintain open communication. We thank you again for joining us this afternoon, and we look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to add, I just remembered, we did have some challenges with some of our parents. with some of our parents logging into the Spanish language channel. And we believe it has something to do with whether you have downloaded the Zoom app on your device. We will include specific instructions with our next town hall invitation. So hopefully, it will be a seamless process so that you can log in for those of you who would like to log in to hear our presentations in Spanish. Again, thank you, everyone, and most importantly, thank you, parents, for spending this time with us today. Have a good evening.